Public Bois of San Antonio, my nation, my ground, and the people with liberty and justice for all.
Most of the few minutes of the October line three. Second.
Second.
On favor. All right, we're gonna do public comment on agenda items only. Um, start at the front row. Second.
Um, just wondering about the budget, about what that looks like at this point? Is there going to be any sort of a tax increase?
We didn't even have a workshop on yet, we just have it presented here today to look at, and then we'll be doing it probably next week, you think?
Is that gonna be available then, or?
After they meet.
Yeah.
You know, drafts.
So it has to be available for twenty-one days.
Twenty days after they meet, we advertise it as available.
You need to mention your name. Kevin Tobias.
I know. Who's the township manager who knows all?
Third row. Fourth row. Fifth row. Got it? Besides? All right, we're gonna go through, uh, opening and, um, opening recycling bids oscillate if that makes sense, right?
Yep. So we have four bids, the first one is goods disposal.
Third, out of mind.
Out of mind. That's an action. And they did it, they did it, they did manual, um, collection, twenty twenty-six, eight hundred thousand dollars. I understand that the budget number for this is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, twenty twenty-seven is eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Let's hope that's not a high bid. Then we have, um.
Was that broken down manual, did they break it?
They didn't do any automated. Jack's disposal, they are out of temple. Manual collection only, uh, twenty twenty-six, two hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. Twenty twenty-seven, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, that is currently lower than what we're paying. Next is J.P. Mascaro.
Do they have the option of doing manual like they can do it now, or with the automatic? And so far, neither of those two give you automatic.
Okay, manual, twenty twenty-six, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. Twenty twenty-seven, three hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars. Automated. Three hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars. Twenty twenty-seven, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty thousand. And the last one is waste management.
We have a representative in there.
Well, they numbered their ages differently then, but it wasn't a bid, so. They've done. With it on manuals. And automated, twenty twenty-six, four hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. And twenty twenty-seven, four hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars, with an additional cost of three dollars per car. And there are charges for that. So you're apparently bitter. Jack's disposal. So.
We make a motion that we accept Jack's disposals in those bitters, his.
After.
I was gonna say. And SS Solicitor, you, the baby, make sure you, uh, we can find the baby.
All right, second.
I'll second.
On favor.
Thank you.
Just, just, uh, for us, you know, anybody else?
Right now, we're.
I knew that.
Yeah, I think it's like three or five.
I was just wanting to see. There. All right. And we keep, you, you bend exactly?
Yep, we keep it the same way that we have, and, uh. We know, uh, there, actually, everything there, we didn't look up that, and then we just invade.
All right. All right, can you guess, we turn from, we'll do their public library.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come in, and I'd like to, uh, update the different townships on the progress of your library. Does everybody here understand that we do have a library for these districts? I do get that question a lot. And every time somebody says, do people still go to the library? Well, I wonder that sometimes myself, because I wonder how long we can continue on sustaining the amount of, um, progress that we have, and also continue to increase. In July of this year, we reached our highest number of circulation, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen thousand, seven thousand, nine hundred and seventeen items in circulation, that's almost eight thousand items in circulation in July alone. That puts a burden on the amount of staff that we have, because we're all part-timers, I don't work in the library, I'm president of the board, uh, but, you know, you're all part-timers, and that's a lot of items in circulation. Nearly four thousand of those items are children's books. Our programs for children, uh, and we consider our children our most valuable asset. A child that learns to read and understand reading and uses their imagination as a child, continues to do that as an, as an adult. More and more statistics are showing that children that use computers, digital devices, TV for entertainment, less than thirty minutes a day, test higher in all scores across the board in the, the groups that we look at, uh, to take statistic, testing statistics from. Those people also grow into adults who are better at understanding and conversing in things like history, arts, social studies, politics, which is contention these days, I guess, uh, job markets, their understanding of work-related documents, mortgage papers, bank papers, wills, medical forms, even winning an argument amongst their peers. They're more apt to have a better understanding of what they're talking about. So our goal is to grab them while they're young, to present as many programs as possible, have them use their imaginations, check out their books, have their parents read to them. So it's no, uh, wonder that most of our books are going to Oregon's readers. Long story short, libraries are still important. The eight thousand items in circulation in July shows that. We also get in other months anywhere from five, six to seven thousand items in circulation, plus not just July, which is normally a low month. We're running on a new system right now, so I don't have current statistics, but the twenty twenty-four Maiden Creek residents saved three hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-one dollars. That amount is by checking books out instead of purchasing them. Fleetwood was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, and Richmond, a hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one. Total savings between our three readership areas was seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. It's just to walk into the library, check out a book. And by the way, we check out a lot more things than just books, you can have yard signs, you can have pickleball paddles. There's, we have a whole library of things that you can look up, we have video cameras, all sorts of things you can use. Our budget for this year, twenty twenty-five, was just over a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. From state and county, we receive a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and twenty-three dollars. From Fleetwood Borough, we received twenty-eight thousand, which is, uh, six dollars and forty-one cents per capita. Maiden Creek, we received fifteen thousand, which is a dollar sixty-four per capita. And Richmond, seven thousand dollars, which is a dollar ninety-four per capita. The library district requires for us to be in any kind of good standing that we have an average of our readership area of two dollars and fifty cents, which we have achieved in the last few years, because Fleetwood does give us a little bit more money, which brings us up to that. The balance between our budget and what we receive from state and local government is about thirty-three thousand, which we put on fundraisers ourselves, we work our tails off at, uh, concession stands, the fiddle fest, rotary car show, whatever it takes, um, plus the library does have a room that they rent out, and we do make some money on, uh, a few different items within the library. In twenty twenty-five, our average per capita was two dollars and eighty-five cents. The previous year was two dollars and ninety-eight. The reason that it has fallen is, and no one told me, is that we had a population increase. Because of the population increase, our funding through state and county has dropped to about twenty-eight hundred dollars. So we're coming back to the townships and requesting additional funding. Um, I did send out a previous letter asking for an increase for Maiden Creek, two thousand dollars per year, which I don't need an answer on tonight. Um, we're extremely careful with our funds, all of our employees are part-time, there's no benefits. Uh, nobody earns more than nineteen dollars an hour, including our director, who is required to have a master's degree and a library of science degree. We do, have started using interns also, we have one, we used to have two from Fleetwood High School, I believe we're getting one in from Kutztown University. And they have these great young minds that know how to digitize things and get it out to the public, uh, social media is their thing, and they're very helpful. Uh, but in order to continue having the high standards that we do in the program that we want to present, by the way, our Tigers in the Park program has continued to grow by leaps and bounds every year, and we're included, we included this year, uh, Maiden Creek Parks, uh, having some of our programs there, but in order to continue these types of programs, we are asking you to instantly be increased. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're onto Norberg's regional police report. So I'm just gonna go over the Maiden Creek numbers for October twenty twenty-five. There were three hundred eighty-eight calls for service, there was forty-three citations issued, there was thirty-three traffic warnings given, sixty-five vehicle contacts, zero arrests. And total of thirty-two crashes, there were two reportable, twenty-three non-reportable, and one hit run. But it was discussed at the meeting, which was, um, not tabled, but moved till, uh, our next meeting for. And we're kind of winding down here at the end of the year, talking about, um, holidays, holidays, uh, or he gathering whatever for the officers, so. Pretty, pretty short meeting.
Well, this is kind of a bit of everybody that's been going now. Um, and come February, our chief will be retiring, so we're in, uh, hiring mode for a chief, and, uh, we have two officers that we're looking at. Uh, so we're in the start of the hiring process. We've got an officer who's gonna be retiring next year, uh, we've had one that is not working currently.
Is there projected increase, um, from the police budget over last year's budget? And what impact does that have on Maiden Creek Township?
That's the, the, we estimate, I don't know, the, with the different calls from last year.
So this year's budget is one million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Their proposed twenty twenty-six is one million, nine hundred eighty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and six cents, so it is a substantial hit.
About twenty thousand a month.
Increase.
On us, yeah.
Have you looked at changing the, uh, percentage because of the number of calls that Ontalani has versus Maiden Creek?
There's some discussion.
Yeah, it was up on the table before, but, um, because the budget's being done this year, it'll be a discussion for next year.
End of the year.
It's, it's been an ongoing thing, they typically have a lot more calls and hours of service than what they pay for.
This, this year is kind of more of a, I would say all the other years, this is more of the, of an increase on that, that we've noticed a, a bigger percentage on that. So it, uh, it was discussed prior, and unfortunately, the budgets for Ontalani and Westport are already, um, somehow put in and are through the methods of approval at this point, so they, they deflected it back and said we would, we'd talk about it next year when we, uh, once we get into the new year. We're hoping that.
I have a question, you, you're looking to hire a new chief internally, you're looking at officers within the police force?
It's opened up, so everybody can apply, we just have to put it out that way, so that, you know, if, timing-wise, if we're kind of up against the cross, that it needs to be done by February, um, well, that, that's the retirement date that he gave us.
But anyone within the county can basically apply to the chief.
Yeah, but so, our internal guys can apply too, if they, if they really want to, we look at it as a whole, you know, it's a debt over everything.
All right, thanks.
You got it. All right, engineering reports panel.
Um, Diane and I have seen some activity going on, which was surprised us for the crossings at Maiden Creek. Uh, they did commit to submitting for the rescheduled planning commission meeting, and December third.
Right.
December third. We also expect to have on that, uh, the pre-scoping, just a quick review on the pre-scoping for the E three E, now it's on time.
Okay.
And also, we anticipate doing our part of the refineries for the source water, so the planning commission can get that back when we're done to discuss. So it will be a busy December P C meeting.
No.
And speaking of busy, Mr. Bowser and the associates are here tonight for the action item that I have, which is for one forty Sanders Boulevard subdivision, which is known as Lot Thirty-Seven, and then for phase four. You know, that gets you have the divided lot, it was very clean, but we did hard work, we got that buttoned up. So Frank, you want?
Thank you.
Just give me a minute, just take a second.
No. Nick, this is the one where the access is one oh five or two.
Nope.
Where in that easement?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And then they also added the eight-foot additional setback in that lot, which is all easements. So in other words, it's, your easement is even more protected.
Because, I don't know, like, yeah. So, this is Sanders Boulevard, the project names, Metro Phase Four, Lot Thirty-Seven. You're looking at the street address, it was one forty Sanders. It's just the regular nomenclature, with the township, has issues with Metro Craig's law, about Craig's stuff. So basically, it's one lot, and really just subdividing it all into two lots. So it's a very simple minor subdivision. And as panel members, we had the common letter, we worked at it, I think we've done most of the comments, we'll try to show them Friday third, you know, but it's just a little. And then, go ahead and keep the group going forward.
No, we're working, recommending permission approval, and if you see, beginning with a letter, so that it was, um, in front of you, there are line conditions. So, it'll slow down. I got very strict, very, very clean, but there were a lot of layers with the authority, and the conditions that we had to issue, and the conditions were there.
These would be the last two lots in that building, is that true?
Yes. For phase four.
Yeah, I think in general, it's a common problem.
Yes, completely, yes. We're looking for a motion for, for, for.
Do you have a motion to run for that?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second.
Second.
Third.
That's real, you can break it, too.
Thank you.
You do the same.
And so we discussed the crossing, the source part of Plant Creek, uh, and spoke with P before the meeting, there's no warrant here, just for the A and S twenty twenty-four, Street Creek. And the whole lot is all that's left from the meeting, unless there are any exceptions, or, or, just one.
One, so we got the, the easement.
We have, everybody's easement except, uh, for, for, because that's the only outstanding one. We're, our, this one, this already got both letters.
We're on X five three?
Yep.
No, this one is.
Yeah, we are, and they are.
And I know that you just, um, and so, I don't know, there's.
We have any, uh. Yeah.
Last chance, we're working.
So how many blocks to give?
Right, well, that's what, that's why I'm still turning back. But I haven't, and I don't know, wait till one, this, on order, this, we gotta get moving on this.
No, your limitations are there.
Right. Yep. All right.
So, we, we've authorized, we've already, and then you decide.
We're trying to get ready to see if there's kind of a cooperation we got, but yeah.
Yeah, if there's none, just go ahead.
All right, zoning report.
So, uh, LPL did a walkthrough on the warehouse project, and they're recommending escrow release number two, the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Any questions on that?
Go ahead, question.
Okay, do you have a question on field, go second.
I'll second that.
All right, favor.
Excuse me, have a question on that?
Sure.
How much escrow is remaining that they, that you're holding?
One million, nine hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred twelve dollars and eighty-five cents.
Just under two million, how much will you hold until it's completed, what percentage?
How, how long is that?
Eighteen months, if you're fifteen percent, that's what, that's what Charlie's.
Until it's, until it's completed, I think there's an extra ten percent in that, into those numbers. Once they're completed, we then get another escrow of fifteen percent of that number, and hold that for eighteen months, to make sure that the improvements stay in good condition.
So once it's completed, the project, you'll hold how much then?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent?
Original number, yeah.
Which, what is that fifteen percent, do you know?
About three million plus, yeah.
And I'll be held for eighteen months, just to make sure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Laura, anyway. So, yeah, the only thing I have is there was a cost hearing, uh, for three twenty Main Street, if you recall. Uh, we got fines of about nine hundred ninety thousand dollars on the criminal matter. Uh, so in October, we had a cost hearing, the property owner did not show up. So, um, the judge is gonna give them thirty days to appear in front of the court, and if they don't, they will have a bench warrant, uh, after arrest. So. When was, that was October? That was October twenty-third, uh, we actually met originally, I believe, back in May, and they were supposed to be making fifty-dollar payments a month, um, really just to kind of come up with a payment plan. Um, they made the first payment, which was made the day of the court appearance, and then they haven't paid any of these things, so, um, it's kind of what we expected. Chris was not happy, but I'm pretty sure it'll get you a bench warrant in this month.
Who's the judge on the case?
Judge Sherry. All right, good? Yes, all right. Roadworks keep. Um, so we finished up the last of our roadwork for December twenty-five. Uh, we've been, last couple of weeks, we've been picking up leaves that have fallen, uh, all our spreaders are down, are ready to go, and it's all been ordered. And files are ready to go, and we're ready for winter, and hopefully it doesn't come, so. Good luck. Yeah, it's pretty much, obviously, trying to go over things. Really good, yeah. That's about it, it's playing. All righty. What's in that, Aaron?
Just got a few things today. We had a, uh, meeting back in, um, I think it was September, for the, um, two hundred fiftieth anniversary celebration that we're currently planning with, uh, the Fleetwood Area Community Organization. We got an email back stating everybody's intent for what they'd like to do for Maiden Creek, um, as a parks, uh, the board, we, uh, decided on having a children's parade as the main theme to the celebration at Community Park. Um, within that, we're planning on doing a pie eating contest for adults, and a watermelon eating contest for kids, having a water balloon toss, cornhole games, kids' games, possibly a bounce house, that's just a thought. Um, con, uh, contest in there, we're thinking about having a July fourth dog costume contest, dress up your dog, winner gets, you know, something. Um, we're looking at possibly having food trucks there, and also having a band play throughout the event. We're looking at probably splitting the day with Fleetwood, so we'd have like more of a, um, maybe ten AM to two PM event at Community Park, and then having like a, maybe a four to eight at Fleetwood Park, that's still, uh, to be determined. Uh, we have another meeting on the second of December to go over more information.
Page for the fireworks.
Yes.
And the parade.
Yeah.
Since we can't have a parade in our township.
Yes, uh, we also.
We can have a parade, but where are we gonna have it?
That makes.
I was gonna say, I didn't say.
And the, the other thing we also were looking at was having a six to eight week long scavenger hunt, where we have a weekly item to look for, and then have kids get involved with that, have a little bingo card, and they go out throughout the township searching for maybe historical places within the township, and learn a little bit more about what, what our township from the past, so. Those are the items that we're looking at doing, and what we will be planning in the upcoming months, um, for the, and we don't have a date yet either, that's to be determined, we haven't decided on that yet.
And the supervisors are involved in the one going. They don't mind that part.
For the Veterans Memorial, we have thirty-two residents interested in donating towards the project for a commemorative brick. So, which is good, I have a list here of those who are interested in it. Yeah, we do have some interest in the township, so. And the last thing I do have here, I just kind of put a small AI together for vending machines, just to give you guys, you can look at it. There is two ways you can really do it, if you want to actually own the machines, stock the machines, et cetera, or find somebody who's willing to put their own machines in here and give the township a cut of the profits, so. Just some food for thought for that for next year, on what route you'd rather go. Obviously, having the.
Brain food.
Yeah. Having somebody come in and give a profit would be the easiest way to do it. Um, but we would, would make more money if we bought, you know, machines than stocking ourselves, so. Just some food for thought for, I'll give this to you guys, send out to the meeting. Couple of machines, it suggests. Yep. I believe that's all I have today. Yes, thank you.
All right, manager.
The month was spent preparing for reorganization, preparing the budget, and, uh, that took a lot of time.
Yeah.
We started out with, what did I tell you guys, like, it was almost four hundred thousand dollars down, so. Right now it's balanced, but when we have the budget meeting, then you'll have to give me. Right now it's balanced, but when we have the budget meeting, then you'll have to give me an extra.
Okay. A lot of effort, appreciate it. All right, new business. We're looking to adopt resolution twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, celebrating the Lions Club's seventieth anniversary on May seventh of twenty twenty-six. Do I have a second?
I have a second, I think.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, schedule a budget workshop.
Next week, sadly, my meeting's scheduled for me, I only have Tuesday night, but if you want to do something early afternoon or over lunchtime, we can do any day, we set it Thursday. Because it's already December.
I'm free Tuesday.
I work Tuesday, but.
Maybe you work in that.
We all have numbers here.
Well, till I get the leave depending on the mass chaos in the state, I don't even say it, it's.
All right, so eleven. Eighteen. For the budget workshop. All right. So there's a. Do you want to call back first, right? The phone system?
So as some know, our phone system earlier in the year died. And we were out of phone service for about a week. And we just have an old system from twenty twelve, there are no real requests on parts about finding somebody who could actually repair it was the trick. So we we knew that we were gonna have to do something. We've got, every year we've been getting information from this Galco, he has a department that deals directly with municipalities and authorities. He is super doctor, Nick and I had some no long, long meetings with him. But the nice thing about this company is when we call, we're gonna get somebody to help us. System is a startup cost of two thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars. We will be paying about a hundred dollars a month, but then our phone bill goes away. We would have a lot more features, everybody would have their own voicemail box. But we could pull these phones out and take them home, like if something like COVID happened again, we could work from home that way. There's an app that we can put on our phone that we can answer calls from the office on our cell phone app and field. So he will get the app, and if he doesn't want to make a call to a vendor using his private cell phone number, he can open up the app. And it looks like he's calling from the township office. Probably, I'm not even sure how many things he said his phone can do, hundreds of things, but we're not gonna use all of them.
I'm not laughing at you, I think it's kind of funny that we're using, we're using a hard landline basically, that's what we're still using here. And this is, this is a voice phone, so it's all over internet protocol. It's been around a while, so we're behind times.
We're gonna have all our ideas, and when you call, I'll know it.
Well, it it is a problem, you know, when we get out for a week at a time, and then they can't get parts, we can't get help, it is really, really aggravating.
Yeah, that was the most aggravating part, because nobody wanted to help us, they kept pushing it off to somebody else. So, you know, this company's been around, Darvin uses them, that's. And they have a whole bunch of authorities and fire companies.
Is that price pool, that that's.
That's everything.
It's not, it's not a bad price, it's.
Well, when we bought the hard system in twenty twelve, I think it was fifty-seven hundred dollars, so, yes.
All right, so do I have a motion, or do you have any questions, sir?
I I don't, and I think he's gonna ask this.
Yeah.
I think we need to go ahead. Now, with the two thousand, two hundred thirty-two, that's one motion to be made, everyone for a hundred dollar a month. So I'll make a motion to purchase a five-day phone system through Galco Communications at two thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, I guess I can bring this one up. We're, I think the estimate for going a joint venture with the Water Authority to do a new municipal office. With the quotes, or I guess higher than where we were looking to be at, and it doesn't really make sense to make that move. So we're looking at terminating the discussions with the authority on a new order, or a new municipal office. And then with the intent on using the bond money that we were gonna allocate to do that in partnership with them to renovate our space here. So do I have a motion to terminate discussion on the new municipal office, though?
You make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll go second.
On favor?
Aye.
I have a follow-up question on that, does the authority plan on staying next door?
I think in the foreseeable future, I don't think they have any plans on.
I I would say so, it had to be discussed with the authority board, but I I don't see us leaving, I think we'd stay in the building we're at right now.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the bills and accept the attorney's report as it was presented? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
On favor? All right, public comment on non-agenda items, first the front row here.
I have a question, my name's David Tranquill, I'm in Walnut Street Drive. I lost sight on, at one time we were talking about putting a fire truck down here.
Well, that was, so that was a part, I guess, years ago, that was an agreement, that was when the land was donated or whatever. That if they were to build a new facility, that we would put an accommodation in there for that.
Don't remember, you know, I've lived here and worked here for a long, long time, and I'm not really in favor of doing that. I mean, we have lots of fire companies on the side of the railroad track. And I have a question, does anyone know, where does Walnut Town, how do they get their funding, other than fundraising? Are they tied in with us at all?
No, Rich Contention has a tax that they split between Ridge, Virginville and Walnut Town.
Yeah, I think we were more or less looking at, well, A, that was kind of the stipulation when the land was donated, that we would include that in, so we're doing, you know. With the people that aren't even around anymore that.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. But anyway, that was the agreement, that that would get in place there. For instance, the other day, a worker was out working on a bike, and the train was blocking from Sunny Creek, and I think down east western. And you can get across it for, I mean, it was there for probably an hour, hour and a half somewhere down, so it's, you know. And they don't tell you any robberies when they break down, and they're they're stopped.
Difficult. Sometimes they'll wait for another train to go through.
Yeah, yeah, that guy backed up, I mean, after he sat there for an hour and a half, then he backed up.
Yep.
Uh, second round.
Yes, I just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy birthday again. All right, third round. Four. Five.
Hold zone worries, two eight four west Walnut Street. My understanding is that they're looking to hire additional officers besides what they have already, other than my chief of police. Has there been something that they're looking to put additional officers on?
It came down to budget reasons, honestly, this year. The, the, so like Dave said, one's retiring, and we have one on leave right now.
Right, so you'll replace the one retiring.
Correct, yeah.
And then one on leave, whatever's gonna have to happen with that.
Right, but then though, if he comes back, there's still be that one that's out there.
Right, but originally you were talking about possibly hiring additional, right, other than the budget?
Yeah, it was, it was discussed, yeah.
However, because of the budget constraints on all three municipalities, we did not move to hire that third officer. But we haven't accepted the budget yet, you're right.
Right, right, okay. Reason I'm asking is because we still seem to have an issue with our jake break problems in this township. And it seems to be even getting more noticeable now that all the trees and leaves are down. At what point, at what point can this township get that additional officer to turn around and start enforcing the ordinance?
Lee?
At this point, there's a, there's a problem with the court. So the court isn't willing to find somebody guilty because of the jake breaks being a safety concern for the drivers. Until that gets squared away, the officers are stopping drivers, they're giving them warnings. But at this point, they're looking at other violations and.
Now, when you say the court, there's the noise ordinance within the township, so you're saying that the court's not willing to enforce the noise ordinance?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And when you say the court, you're talking about the municipal DJ, the local DJ?
Local DJ.
Very interesting. All right, thanks.
That's being worked on, the police department has been trying to.
So if they pull them over, give them a citation, they can't find them then, they could just give them the citation.
Well, they give them the citation.
Then they have to appear.
And then the judge is gonna find them not guilty.
Wow, interesting, all right, thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question, Heidi Pfeeler, for the budget for twenty twenty-six, how much money's gonna be allocated for fixing stormwater related issues, including Willow Creek stream itself that has a lot of issues?
We just, this is a book here today, so we haven't, this is the, she gave us the fire revision, so we can look at it.
Oh, it's proposed right now, because none of us have seen it. Diane, do you know what it is?
So without having, without them having discussed it, it's just a number. You know, it's not, it doesn't have any real meaning until they tell me what projects they want to do. So we have five thousand dollars for MS four activity, and I think it's twenty. Another twenty for stormwater supplies. So if, and that doesn't include cornerstone, which is out of the bond. Probably be spending close to five hundred thousand dollars on cornerstone riggers. So the budget means really gonna be a lot of discussion and direction on what they want to do.
And how much money's left on the bond?
We still have almost the whole bond because of the delays on all projects.
How much is not allocated for any projects?
Well, we had it all allocated because we didn't want to build it, but now that.
Right, we're not gonna do the municipal building, so how much is left?
I don't have a spreadsheet for that answer right now.
And we don't know, because we don't have, we just, we just terminated this discussion for, with the authority, we're gonna put a million and a half. The park, they were gonna put a million and a half, we were gonna put a million and a half.
Okay, that's the question I had, so one point five million dollars from the bond was gonna go to municipal building, and now you just voted not to do that.
Correct, we're still to renovate this, so that's, you're probably gonna, this, to do a renovation of this building, to to make everything up to date, codes and all that, you're probably looking, you're, yeah, ADA compliance, you're probably looking at at least a million, I mean, renovations, it's gonna be, it's probably over. It's gonna be probably over a million dollars, plus, we gotta, it's gonna be some inconvenience and rearranging for sure, so, yeah.
Okay, because it continues to be serious stormwater problems with the Willow Creek that the township owns. And then, I'm sure you've been on Facebook, there was a couple of weeks ago, there's a person posted near Faith Drive, there's a lot of erosion, sedimentation over there, behind those houses.
There was a tree that was down, we went up there.
I'm not talking about a tree, no, they're showing, she probably looked that up, it was about the end of October, where there's a lot of erosion, same thing that's happening in the other section, the longest western row of the Willow Creek, where there's a lot of erosion, a lot of sedimentation. It's eating away, and on my farm in one section, it's causing sedimentation and erosion in other places too, so it's causing property damage, it's contributing to flooding and so forth. So that's what I'm talking about here, and other places, so it's, it's important that the township take care of the township-owned property and the impact it has on residents, and that's my point.
We do agree.
Well, then I would see, okay, then I would expect that the township also commit funds to take care of this because it is.
Is not township owned, that is.
What's that?
The creek is not township owned, that's owned by the Commonwealth of PA, so.
No, the township actually owns the creek, in certain sections, they do, it's.
It's not true, I'm already talking to the conservation district, I have a meeting scheduled in January, and until that meeting happens, I really can't fill you on anything about it, so. Plus, we're still, as I know, we're in litigation with you right now, so. I really can't even discuss.
Well, unfortunately, I had to file a suit because you're not taking care of township-owned property, and you're causing problems on my property and on people's property at the same time.
Right now, it's between the attorney and your attorney, so.
We're renovating this now, is the Water Authority gonna contribute with that project?
We're not touching their side, they did their renovations a couple of years back, so we're just going from here.
I have another question, I.
Sure.
Water Authority got five million dollar bonds also. That bond, now they just raised five percent, whatever, for oil fees. That, what's that bond going to be utilized for, five million?
It's a year off, I have no idea.
So our five million bond was used for our well six and seven construction of the two wells, that are gonna contribute more portable water to the community. So that's already, most of that is being spent right now.
So you've spent pretty much five million dollars on the new well system that's, was built over there then?
Almost, there's about, there's about a million dollars left, but yeah.
Okay, and that million, do you have other plans for that?
Our plans for that, for the rest, which is, which was put in our, our interest investment account, is gonna be used for for that project alone. So we're using all the, all the funds for that project.
What additional has to be done on that project?
Site work, the access driveway, all the site work, finishing the stormwater, the storm sewer, some interior equipment, insulation. So there's still some stuff that needs to be finished.
Right.
Once, yeah.
Once it's gonna be done?
I'm hoping that spring.
Because I, I mean, I drive by it every day, and there's no activity whatsoever.
I know, I, it's frustrating for us, we're waiting for the conservation district to issue our NPS permit that expired. And they changed regulations on us, so it's been in limbo with them, removing the applications for the last six months.
So the conservation district basically came in and said that you have to now upgrade certain things there at the site?
We we had a permit, basically they changed it from a general permit to an individual permit, so they changed the regulations on us during construction. So that's why there's, it's been sitting there, it would have been done a year ago if they didn't, conservation district didn't, didn't hold this up. So hopefully by next spring.
I appreciate the time, I appreciate the information, thank you.
No problem.
On your side? All right. All right.
Wow.
Completes the agenda?
I'm sorry, my name is Ryan Gidney, I'm a sales director for Mascaro and Solar Recycle and A and Compost. Was there another memo or another email or letter sent out about the meeting time?
No.
Only reason I asked is, you know, and I appreciate you taking my question, I know you're dumb. Because what we received was six fifteen, and I was here at six oh five.
No, maybe it's our, our.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying it was written.
The date opening.
Yes, six fifteen, and.
I didn't even look at the clock.
Well, is it okay, even if it's for the future? I, one, I needed to write down the numbers, if I don't, only.
I had a drink, sorry it won't be.
That is, nice, you're welcome. You know, I guess a few things we did, we just wanted to bring up was, yeah, we've been doing fourteen. Fiscally, operationally, we're, I would say we're the most solid company in the country. We own a recycling center, no one's ever gonna tell us that the tip rate's changed, we're never gonna have any jam up like that. You had in this past, for almost four years, the twenty-eight companies, by January, we would be done in this footprint. It's a company's being absorbed, another one being absorbed by Republic. So twenty-eight companies have gone out of business in, I think, four, in four years, six disposal sites are closing. So you've got shrinking providers and shrinking capacity. Mascaro has neither of those, our recycling center is unlimited, and our, we know you don't use it, well, I don't even know if you use it, because you do your own trench, I think, to take care of the trench, so. We've got sixty years here. And our DEP and service records are, I think our last report card we got from the gas was excellent. I understand it looks like it's about a dollar seventy a month per house difference. And again, if things might not work out, things happen, if it doesn't, we were only a difference of a dollar seventy. And I don't want this money, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars in a year, is that money, again? But it is only a dollar seventy a house, I even came by my company for that. And we do offer unlimited, we know the job, we know the development, I have, when I heard of Mascaro, we, I know we quoted order, order, we were gonna bet you not to do that. And I know you did, the company jacks is, is, but if I have photos, it's a. And I know you did, the company jacks is, is, but if, I have photos, it's a lot.